Okay. This time we have open to the public. Agenda items only, please limit your comments to three minutes. And come before you can give your name and address, please.
I was always going to let ladies go first, but nobody stood up. Brian Ken, Brian Spacemoney. Six licensees for video game licenses in the village of Moni have contributed to the village of Moni since January through September, the amount of forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. That's the amount of a windfall budget revenue that has been benefited from Moni. In Will County, the average fee per machine runs from fifty to hundred dollars, except in Moni where the machine, where the machine fee is two hundred dollars. People on this board, including you, Mr. Mayor, were vehemently against video gaming. And now it seems like you want to capitalize on it. You want to raise the fees from two hundred dollars, as I understand, to a thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Without any premise or basis for doing so, as far as I'm concerned, this is taxation without representation, but more importantly, you haven't taken into consideration or further consideration the consequences of your actions. In business, bills must be paid. Contributions and donations, however, don't have to be made. The more difficult you make it to do business in Moni, the more difficult you make it for businesses in Moni to be benevolent in helping the organizations in this community to rely on business donations. Now, I could go, don't worry Stan, but you do what you must do. But when the Mavericks come to me and want monetary help, so they can get their team to Texas, I'll have to tell them to seek help from Paul, the guy who took it from Peter. Now, I'm not going to be here for the vote, Mr. Mayor, but I'm going choir practice, first time in four weeks. They need my voice.
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
As I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, the fee here is paid by the game owner, not by the business owner?
The fees are split. Half by the vendor, which would be me, and the other half is paid for by Excel Entertainment, who is our vendor.
So if you pay half, they pay half?
Right. So if there's a thousand dollar machine, five thousand dollars, I pay twenty-five hundred. Which at the, to this point, I was paying fifty dollars per machine, and then it went to two hundred dollars a machine, and now it's being proposed to go to a thousand dollars a machine. And I'm a small businessman. Two thousand dollars for me is a lot of money. That's, that's employee bonuses, that's Christmas bonuses, that's, it's important to me. And I don't know what your agenda is, or whether you've got some fiscal issues that you have to address for this particular action, but I just want to make my feelings known tonight.
Can I ask you a question, Brian?
Yes.
How many machines do you have in your?
We're allowed up to five machines. I have five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to?
Can you just leave also? I live in five-one-five seven Park Lane in Moni. I own Mulligan's public, everybody knows. And when I was, I always, I can't be at all means, I have problems this year, but I'd always look at the agenda, see what's going on. And then when I seen this, when I looked at the agenda, I start seeing all this stuff, I start, I would figure they would come to us and ask us, you know, questions about how we're doing and that stuff, business-wise, because we're, like Brian said, we are hurting here in town. And due to, you know, other issues and that stuff, I don't want to get into it this time. But I own my own business, that's all, that's all I do. I don't have outside interests or anything. But I did sixteen years of my time and effort into this village. I volunteer for everything. Anybody comes to the door, I give it to them, or else I'll, if I can't get it, we'll find some way to do it. And I just help out the community and that stuff. And things are rough, I have to admit. I don't know about other businesses, but my business has been rough due to other things that's going on in this town. But the, I'm glad I'm still here talking to you guys after the reconstruction we had. We lost nine, well, I guess about a year ago, we lost ninety-eight thousand dollars from heaven, and I never made it up. We've been, we had to borrow money to stay away, and we're, we're at the breaking point right now, and we're going to be around. And, and it was nice enough that you guys still let us have the machines in town. I fought for it with Excel to get in here, because any kind of, that's the only revenue we got coming into us, because everybody's not coming here. Everybody knows that Will County, the eastern part is the poor side of the town. Everybody else gets what they want in Frankfurt, we gotta always go to Beth for what we want in this town. And I'm talking about all of Will County. And I even go to Will County names and that stuff, the child, but my thing is, is with the license in it, think very hard, I know you guys all have jobs, and you're working for big industries and that stuff. But think about the little guy here, that I, you know, especially me, I'm not going to be around much longer in this town, and that stuff, and I want, you know, what I have here, I want to keep what I got and that stuff. And I'm not playing sorry up here, I just, I just got hurt, and that, because we used to talk about things, you know, what can we do, you know, what's fair and what's not fair. And the last thing that's came up is, some of the board members, you know, they thought we didn't have to pay for anything, but anything Excel's does in our parts and that stuff, or anything, we gotta pay half. And it's always seems like it's half, 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 whenever we go to sign the contract and that stuff. He says, "Don't worry, we're going to take care of everything." Well, once you sign the contract, I knew that, but it seems like everything's escalating, you know, licenses and everything. It's just get out of hand, you know, when is enough and that. I'm just giving my view here, and I love this town, and I live here, I've been here enough. Just give some thought, and then, you know, and just, you know, just think about the little guy and that stuff. I appreciate listening to me tonight. I know I'm not the best speaker, I talk from the heart and that stuff, and the heart's for the village too, so thank you for listening.
I'd like to respond, if I may, I wish Brian was here yet, but as a trustee, I'm led to believe, apparently it's wrong that no cost for you, I mean, the machines.
They take care of it.
Someone said, Brian said.
So like fifty-fifty?
Yeah, well, for me, it's going to go from, let's see, three hundred to, three hundred to fifteen hundred. That's a big price, a big thing, like, and that stuff. So that's the numbers, exact numbers to, so thank you.
Anyone else for open to the public? At this time, we'll move on, can move on to the consent agenda. It's been brought to my attention, we need to remove item number one. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F1.
I'll make that motion. I'll say it.
Sorry, that was, um, Gonzales.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board's report?
I don't have a report, Mr. Mayor, but you want to take a minute to thank the early Moni volunteers, they did, they brought that, so, I know since in the eyes.
Pass it on to your team, so that's right. On the mayor's agenda, item H1. Got a bunch of stuff in my back, it's a little straight, the red page there. Mr. Rust Taylor had sent us a letter, he actually contacted the office and followed up with a letter. According to his annexation agreement, he was entitled to exercise an option, if you're familiar with where this property is located, it is, you know where the church is at on the corner of Will Center and Court Street? He owns the property that's immediately east of that, up to the same, I believe, to the east edge of Country Meadows. So that whole front edge along Creek Money Road, Court Street, whatever, right there, from the church all the way over, is owned by Mr. Taylor. When it was originally annexed, the agreement allowed for him, it stipulated that front three hundred feet would be zoned commercial. It's got kind of an L shape of commercial zoning there, but there, he has an additional three hundred feet that's behind that, that's adjacent to Country Meadows. The homes, it would be to the south of the home, that is zoned residential. He has the authority by the agreement, the annexation agreement, to simply notify us that he'd like to have that converted to commercial. That was the terms of his agreement. He is asking at this time for us to consider, in lieu of actually making that conversion, which is an option that we could defer to, and if you see in this letter, that's option number two, to merely exercise that. He is asking to simply extend the option, so that for, say, five years, we could allow him to extend that option to see what is truly the best use of that land. If you look out of Majesty, this kind of landlocked, there's not any way to get to that land from Country Meadows without going to a pond, or some other, you know, there's not actually any ingress or regress for that. So it really doesn't seem prudent for it to be residential, per se, because of the way it was developed around that. It's at the board's discretion, I talked to council about this, it's at the board's discretion as to whether we could want to continue the ability to have a rezon, say five, within the next five years, or just go ahead and allow him to go and exercise the option, convert it to commercial now, so it's established, you all know what it is. I don't have particular preference, I think ultimately, it's best used, probably is commercial. But that's at the board's discretion, so I, before taking the motion, if you want to have some discussion, but I would try to get a show of hands for how many for option one, how many for option two, so I have an idea.
House of, you have a recommendation?
This was done probably twenty years ago, it was a period ago, the prop, or the highest use for the prop was probably being commercial. And under the redevelopment, under the annexation agreement, it was signed, you know, twenty years ago, he had the right to do so.
And it doesn't go back far enough, it's still commercial, funded, it's still being farmed?
Yeah, the whole thing is being farmed right now.
Okay. And he could continue farming it, even zone commercial?
Yeah.
Because he's leasing the land?
Yeah. And Mr. Taylor used to live, actually, used to live in the farmhouse that was on where Country Meadows is now. He actually owned all that land at one point, had it developed, and subsequently, I think for the last ten years, I think he's been living in Florida, approximately, so.
We have, we have an area in the village right now, we have a problem with it, we wish it were all of this expansion. We're all aware of that area?
I'm not aware of it.
Really?
I'm not.
The lady that put the money in the real home? What area you said?
It's five, fifty-five, fifty-nine Main Street, just between Governors and.
That's right.
What I want to say is, I'm not aware of the fact that we're all in agreement that it needs to be zoned residential, is what you stated, I just want to clarify that.
It's been a problem, folks.
I understand, I won't dispute that. I won't dispute that.
Well, my question here is, and my concern would be, if we allowed the expansion of that, could there, is there any way that some business could win there and cause the noise problem over there? Did anybody answer that?
According to our current commercial zoning, there's still an expectation for.
Yes, sir, I believe the, he or she, whoever comes in, will have to comply with our regulations pertaining to business development, retail development. I believe this property was adjacent to where Mr. Seehouse was planning to build, right next to it. So, and I believe those homes were there, probably built subsequent to Mr. Taylor, I mean, yeah. But whoever comes in, whether it be, you know, a grocery store, or whatever these may be, they gotta comply with what our code calls for. And if there's an issue, you can always put up a buffer, if you had to, from a development standpoint, because DJ and Brubin still got to improve the plans. So maybe four or five homes, that would be a J, sorry, that would be contiguous with that property, but he still has the right to make it according to redevelopment strike that, according to the annexation agreement, he's got the right to say, I want to make it commercial.
Well, just to clarify, before any of those homes were there, before any homes were in that subdivision, this annexation agreement existed, which gave him that latitude. He actually owned all the land, and he was given the latitude for this to be commercial. So that was something that's been on the books for nineteen and a half years now.
And the way the idea too was, because that first strip home of the bank was, they were going to have, you know, strip laws on each side.
Correct. And I think the frustration of the board, nineteen years ago, eighteen, nineteen, it was in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, somewhere thereabouts, the board at that time, I believe, shared some frustration about the fact that how dare they put a church in property that should have been zoned commercial? Because typically churches are residential zonings, not commercial zonings. And they, I think the board, Larry, now that's before you or me, but I believe it's about nineteen eighty-nine or ninety, the board was frustrated by the fact that they'd been allowed to be given up a prime quarter like that for something that wasn't going to provide any property taxes or anything else. And that was, I'm not saying I share this, I'm just saying that was, at the time, that was some of the frustration that was had, because that was a perceived direction of the village, was to go east along Creek Money Road.
Well, that being said, then, would anybody wanting commercial there, or the residents there, now that there's a church, which is, you know, a landmark, right there on that corner, object to that being commercial now, or something going commercial in that area?
It's, it's actually, if you look on the map, I'm not sure how well it illustrates it on here, but the entire, from the front of Creek Money Road, I think it's still called Creek Money Road, from Creek Money Road all the way to the back of, it's Jesse Ray's house there on Iris, that area there is actually all zoned commercial. So there's a three hundred, it's a six hundred foot depth on that first three hundred feet from the church, that's already zoned commercial. And then it continues on east, where it's only three hundred foot deep, and the rest is zoned residential. And if you actually drive out there, you'll see some of that's actually kind of impossible to develop anyhow, because there's some wetland type issues over there. I'm not sure if it's actually declared wetland or not, it is, okay. But there's a limited ability to develop that anyhow. So that is actually some of your natural boundary, or buffer, if you will, between your, your residents and your... So at this point, what we have is, we have a request from the property owner to exercise his right, or to allow us to extend that option to exercise that right. It's not really up to us at this point to deny either of these, but to allow one of these.
So it sounds like this is going to be a commercial, whether we do it now, or three to five years from now?
Theoretically, the only contingency you have would be is, if he is no longer the owner, I believe, Larry, typically the agreements are written for the current owner only. Now, it's in a trust, which means technically, the ownership is not just based on the fact that he's up in his years, and five years from now, whether he's around or not, the trust, this kid, he's got two sons, would have the ability to continue that, because it's the same board technically, I'm, I'm paid.
I don't see what you can use it for, other than commercial, so I.
It's landmark for anything else.
I would move that we extend that.
Extend it, or convert it?
Add that three hundred foot section as commercial.
So you're, you're merely requesting that, and I just want to get an idea here, because we have two options available to us. Because if we don't exercise the first option that he's asking for, the other option is, he's merely saying, if we don't accept the first option, just extending his option, then he's, by this letter, he's officially requesting we go and convert it.
Do we have a recommendation from staff?
I, I don't think the staff has a preference one way or the other, unless I've talked to them about it. Larry doesn't, it doesn't matter one. The only benefit would be at least we'd know for a fact where it is. So, can I get a show of hand, how many people want to go with this option, the one he provided, just to extend this for another five years? Okay? I assume everybody else is in favor of just letting him go ahead and exercise that immediately? All right. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge his request and convert the second, that additional acreage to commercial, so the entire parcel would be zoned commercial.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, Horn and Gray?
Would this be a question?
I'm sorry, say again?
Ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would this be something that should go to the zoning committee before it comes to us?
It would have already gone through the zoning committee twenty years ago.
But should it go through again?
I mean, the zoning board has the right to look at, the only consideration to consider would be, we've already made a commitment, the previous twenty years ago, the board said it's in agreement, so if the zoning board says, "We don't like the terms of agreement," that was done twenty years ago, and I would think it runs with the land. So I believe any recommendation made by our zoning board could be moved, because they weren't part of the action, it was twenty years ago.
Yeah, my concern is, if we convert it to commercial, then there is no other choice, or possibly somebody may come up with some ideas for residential.
They could always come before the board, especially, we should go before the current zoning board, and then the village board. So that whoever, at some point in the future wanted to, they could. I mean, that's always a provision, we're always entertaining those considerations. I mean, somebody might want to.
It sounds like, well, he really wants to turn it into commercial anyway.
Well, he doesn't know yet. He's, he, he thought the airport, he thought Italy, and he thought all these things were going to happen a lot sooner, and all this kind of stuff, so he thought, you know, development was going to occur a lot sooner up there. He really didn't expect twenty years from now, he'd still be, or twenty years from now, he'd still be trying to figure out what's going to happen to that property. Now, he's just thinking about his kids. So, it is his right to exercise that request. Any more discussion? Call, please.
Trustee Holston?
No.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
No.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
And just to clarify, if the board did not want to approve that, I know we had a couple of no votes, ultimately, in a situation like that, we'd be in a legal battle that we would lose?
He would question the vote, more likely, because the agreement was signed again from, all he's doing is saying, "I'm exercising my option."
I just want clarification, that's fine. All right, thank you. Okay, absolutely.
My question?
Yes, sir.
I disagree with the public debate, Mr. Mayor, for the record. We had a choice of one or two, either one was acceptable to this person.
Well, correct.
So, so either one?
I understand what you're saying, but if we shut down number one, it is, as an issue, if we shut down number one, and then number two is the only option we had, was, he gave us, he gave us two options, either to extend the option.
Correct, correct.
I understand.
And we agreed, well, for two, for two, which is fine, but one would have been acceptable as well, we wouldn't have any election on one.
Correct.
Okay.
If we choose right, right. Right. Okay. Quarte? Item H2, it is, Larry, do you want to address this?
Yes, push on.
There's nothing in the packet.
There's not, all right, let me just give a little preface. There's nothing in the packet, because this is a.
I have two H3s, though.
There's nothing in our packet, there is a new business possibility for Moni, somebody may have already heard that one of local businesses has secured the potential of an Indian and Victory Motorcycle Dealership in Moni. The, it's a contingency, certain things have to be done. I think, you know, there's a number of us that see another retail business would be a good thing. And I personally had met with the owner, the businessman, and the representatives from Polaris, Polaris is actually the mother company now for Indian and Victory. And it was a very impressive meeting, where there's a high expectation for the potential here. This would be reutilizing some property that's currently in place, that would need some additional development, significant, very costly improvements to an existing building to meet their criteria. Polaris has a very high standard, they don't settle for mediocrity when they, when they actually do their build-outs for their dealerships, especially for the motorcycle line like this. They, they actually, for the interior, interior prep design, all that kind of stuff, they actually have their crew come out, I mean, all the other construction can be done locally and all that kind of stuff, but the interior design and accommodations and all that comes from, they actually have a travel team that goes out and makes sure everything meets their detailed specifications for presentation. That being said, the businessman that's looking to do this is requesting some assistance from, he's within the TIF district, and I referred the council to see how we could help facilitate this, what do you call, a pre-development kind of soft, what, go ahead, Larry.
Yes, sir. The properties, from what I understand, that's in the TIF on Governors Highway, at times when the developer, whether it be this village or any other, there was times of the essence, what this developer is requesting, from my understanding, is a, what they call a pre-development agreement, setting forth, if the developer does A, B, and C, the villagers will commit to D, E, and F. Then, after that is signed, then a redevelopment agreement, a final redevelopment agreement that we've done before in the past, will be signed by the parties. From my understanding, the developer is looking to, his TIF expenses would be, I believe, four hundred thousand dollars. He's also requesting that he will start construction by, I believe, the spring of 2015. Those were the basic terms, also that fifty percent increment would be used to pay the four hundred thousand dollars. I haven't talked to him personally about his timing, but from what I understand, he is asking for the board to make a commitment, that they would like this type of project on Governors Highway, obviously of general rate, sales tax revenue, we haven't seen his costs. Any project we have, such as the trucking company, whatever, you do get a list of his project costs, he may give his costs, would be TIF cost, would be four hundred thousand dollars, ballpark. TIF costs, again, land acquisition, engineering, development plans, architectural infrastructure, like we talked about before, but what he's looking for is something to go back to the franchise company, saying they have a tentative commitment from the village, if they're comfortable with it, then you authorize myself to draft a formal redevelopment agreement for the board. So in essence, we're giving the highlights.
And you had, you had some additional terms?
Four hundred thousand for TIF costs, fifty percent increment, and it wouldn't, the agreement would not extend beyond the current term of the redevelopment project area. I believe this property is on the Governors Highway TIF, which is established probably five years ago, so you got eighteen years to go on it. And four hundred thousand, if he does generate that kind of revenue from the real estate standpoint, that should be paid within that period of time.
But then be clear then too, if none of that sales tax revenue then becomes, then would it totally affect?
No, this is a separate issue, hold on. This is strictly about the increment on his property taxes.
And how much, honestly, how much they, if it's an existing building, how much tax increase would be, that be up to the accessory? Because that building's already there, so it's not like it's vacant land, a new building going up, your tax will go through the ceiling. The situation, the building's there, so that.
So they're going to use part of that building?
Part of the existing building. This is, just to clarify, this is the building where Ty Bell used to be, if you guys are familiar with where, just south of McLones, yeah, just south of McLone, eighty-four and towards, I think it's what it was.
But they're only asking for fifty percent?
Only they're asking for fifty percent.
Fifty percent would have come back to us.
And it's consistent with where we've been on other projects recently, especially since there's not any infrastructure cost, you know, that we're not having to build things together to home or anything else. I'll entertain a motion to have the attorney work out the details of a three. Hon or Tain a motion to have the attorney work out the details of a pre?
Pre-development agreement.
Pre-development agreement, keeping in mind that any of the TIF eligible expenses are regulated by state statutes, so that you can't just say, well, it cost me this and that, and whatever else, there's criteria that any of these agreements have to abide by, is that correct?
This would be just for TIF?
This agreement would just strictly be for TIF, that is correct.
I'll make the motion, I'll say it.
Holston and Razor? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
All right, item H3. In speaking with council or administrator, we've done some additional review and research, in the past, we've used a variety of different newspapers for publication of legal notices, one of the things we've, we've run into is the reason that we've used one, I think at one point where we, on our legal notices, when we have like a P and Z meeting or something like that, we were concerned about the timeliness, and we didn't want to unnecessarily delay the ability for us to have a hearing, as you can see on the, there's a calendar type layout here, illustrates if there's a meeting on, say, December eighteenth, I apologize, I think this calendar's from 2014, but it's still, same concept, that if it were, if a P and Z meeting as an example is to be held on December eighteenth, legally, the notice would have to be published in a newspaper on Tuesday, the, the third of December, and you can see on the grid, there's a couple different illustrations, depends on how people read things, the Daily Herald has always been the most efficient, you know, we had to have it till by ten AM the day before, the publication needed to take place, so that was been the, the de facto and a, and a tiny time crunch, but in doing some additional review, you'll notice that two business days before, which have to be back into November now, instead of one, it'd be two days, business days actually is three extra days, because you got a weekend that we run into because of the timeliness of that, Country Market, Kinky Key Journal, the Chicago Tribune, Chicago Sun-Times, and the Daily South Town, all are available to us on the twenty-ninth of November, if we got to them by those times listed there. Unfortunately, the Mooney Monitor adds an additional week, which almost doubles the legal requirement, because their requirement is to have it till by the end, close the business on Friday, the, of the twenty-second, and what that does is it, it creates a significant delay, additional delay, in getting the publication out, there is a section of statute that was included in your packet also, the bottom of this page here, that includes a section of law that was implemented, effective December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, is a, it is a, not just a replacement, but it's an upgrade, if you will, to any other sections of statute that have become somewhat obscure because the treasuries report, or the budget, or the different things like that, now, each one had their own little stipulations on certain criteria. Larry Allen, have you, I mean, everybody's had a chance to read this, but I would give...
Yes, sir, we've had them before in the past, in certain situations, I'll give you an example, a couple of years ago, with respect to the budget, we have to have that published fairly quickly, and the board will call sometimes for certain reasons, we even have a year until end of July, so timing's critical, and if it's not published the correct way, you could be challenged on that, sometimes in the past, we had to use other papers because it's a mayor indicator, the publication dates are different, usually the best one, like the mayor indicator, was either the Daily Herald or the South Town Economist, the Daily South Town, they did very, very good work, now the law is, it's important that the distribution is as large as possible and with its...
Circulation.
Circulation, the Mooney...
Yeah, and then just to clarify, one of the things it stipulates, if you read the section of code, and for anybody who wants to read this at home, if they don't have the copy of this, it's seven fifteen ILCS ten slash three, and it's an act of the ninety-sixth General Assembly, but one of the things it gets into there is a, the preference is always given to a local newspaper, by the statutory guidelines, we don't actually have a local newspaper, because the Monitor is actually not, it's not published first available in Mooney, nor is it first available on Crete, it's actually Piattum, which is not even a local paper technically, by statutory guidelines, the, Larry.
Have you heard what they're looking, would be the policy of the board, is it appropriate to use the marketer?
Well, whichever would have the best circulation, the spirit of law, not just a letter law, but the spirit of law would say, we want to make sure that when we're making proper notices, our goal was transparency, that we want to make sure that every notice gets to, into as many hands as possible for the, and they're all about the same price, and if you look at the, if you look at the circulation, you'll see according to, and this is what the, the local newspapers have identified, and we had staff contact each of these, the Monitor record has a local circulation, and it can't delineate between Mooney proper and Mooney as a zip code, about five hundred, the Country Market has three five hundred, the Daily South Town has three hundred and two, the Daily Journal on Kinky Key has a hundred and eighty-seven to two hundred and eight, depends on which, you know, there's different, they get like their weekend, and I think their Wednesday one's different for some reason, and the Daily Herald, Chicago Tribune, and Chicago Sun Times did not have defined information for us at this time, there's a little bit of, I won't say turmoil, but the South Town as an example was just bought by the Sun Times not too long ago, so it's even hard getting numbers from them based on their current staffing, so I'm looking for the board's recommendation to honor that, this is a letter of law, but the spirit of the law, as, as it pertains to this, providing for efficiency and making sure our developments, our notices and things like that are put out in a timely manner, but at the same time, we have effective saturation to those households, those businesses, the people that may be affected by your legal notices, so, any questions or discussion pertaining to these?
This isn't just, just a discussion, this is not action tonight.
Well, it's, it's internal policy, is really what it is, and I'm asking for the board's input on this, because...
Everyone, our staff is responsible for getting these out through the publications.
It's through the clerk's office, which includes their deputy clerk most of the time, and that is oftentimes based on the recommendation of council, and, you know, based on the timeliness and the needs at hand, so, I, at this point, I think it's best for the, the board to, you know, be aware of this, and if the board has a preference, I, I can send here the preference from the board as far as, do we want to go for the most efficient, do we want to go for the most saturation, or do we want to go for something else?
Fine, for all of the above.
Okay.
Knowing, just having even fax numbers and, like, on a speed dial on the fax machine, it can easily, if we have it by the nineteenth or the twenty, twenty-ninth of November for the December eighteenth meeting, we could easily hit all five of them with one dial of the fax if it's the same number.
Well, there again, you're gonna be paying, in some cases, a hundred fifty, two hundred, the show is, about a hundred fifty dollars, across this, a hundred fifty dollars per newspaper approximately, so, I'm not recommending we spend the same amount and publish it in every newspaper, I merely...
The legal notices and those are costs.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And that's just...
Sorry, pleading ignorance here, I didn't mean...
No, 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 I didn't mean, I didn't mean to talk down to you there, I'm sorry, that didn't mean like that, I'm just saying that, I, I was surprised sometimes too, even like, if you want to send a thank you through the newspaper or something like that, they're charging for that, they're charging for, they...
I do press releases for free all the time.
Well, press releases are different for some reason, but when you're doing legal notice, they, they know, they got you on the hook for that, so that's where they make their money.
Did you disguise it as a press release?
Trust me, I've tried a few times.
So it seems like if you're, if you're trying to get the largest blast, you should do the, a Country Market, because that's...
Yes, to every home.
That comes automatically, I believe, to every home.
Sure.
And, so you're gonna get the most, I guess the only thing is it's, it's more of a Kinky Key County paper than a Will County paper, I don't know if that's an issue or not.
It is, but circulation is complete saturation in our footprint.
That's in our footprint, but I guess it depends on what people in the east, Go to Co County, or people from, you know, western Will County will see it.
Legally, we were okay with using the Daily Herald because it was a publication within Will County, but if that is insufficient for circulation purposes, as the statute defines here, then we are allowed to go outside the county to get better circulation.
But the intent here is to send to people who are in Mooney.
Correct, and if you, as Trustee Horn indicated, if you want the Country Market, it would go to everybody in Mooney.
It might, but I personally don't read the Country Market, I'm not a trash man, I read the Mooney Monitor.
Okay.
When you get more, my question for that is, excuse me, my question, you don't mind, thank you, sorry, I apologize, my question for that is, if we talk to the Monitor and ask them if that can be changed?
We have asked for all the newspapers for their timelines, their rigid timelines, and this is what we've been told.
I understand, and my question is, have we asked them if they can change it?
They would have to change their publication date to two days earlier for that to be of irrelevance, and right now, they consistently, every one of their newspapers is published on Thursday, which forces us, yeah, bro.
Trustee Holston, just to answer your question, Wednesday is actually the actual date they prefer, prior to the date, Friday is the latest, so typically, Friday tends to be the day that that information will go to them, prior to noon, but Wednesday is a preferred day.
I was specifically asking about the Monitor, because that, that's a whole week behind.
That's what I'm referring to, is the Monitor, but, so, so you, so the board's aware, we want to put the information into the Mooney Monitor, but to cover the, the legal portion of it for the fifteen day requirements, we reached out to the Herald to make sure it's in there for fifteen days, it's in Will County, it's distributed to Mooney, there's a small distribution number, but it's also given to the Monitor as well, and specifically, a legal notice was put out for a planning and zoning meeting that, I believe, July or August, July, August, there was a change in the date, this is how this kind of all came, came to fruition, there was a change in the date for a planning and zoning meeting, in order to meet then the change for the meeting, we were then put into a position, well, we have to put the fifteen days in, so in order to meet that, that requirement, we put it into the Herald, we were caught the task online, we reached out and did not put it in as a legal notice, and the explanation was given, well, we have this fifteen day, but at the same token, we did put this public hearing notice in the Monitor, so it was put in the Monitor, and it was also put in to the Herald, so we covered both bases, but at the same time, it's lost, there's extra money, we're paying twice, and, you know, so timing has always, has been the issue, is this, that we have the fifteen day, we're meeting that requirements, and you get the distribution as well.
I'm sorry.
My opinion, as, like I said, like, you know, Trustee Horn said, and, you know, everybody gets the Country Market, we're gonna get that in a timely fashion, not to slate the Monitor, because obviously they support us, they come to all our meetings, you know, they get stories out, they come to our, our functions, I mean, if we give them the fifteen day notice, I mean, it's, it's out there, I know that some people might, so firstly, I don't have mail, but you can go to any store in town and pick up the Monitor, putting it in the Daily Herald and, and the Sun Times, I mean, kind of, on what you said, Trustee, I'll say, we're looking at Mooney, you know, we're not looking at who's in Juliet or come to Mooney. Press it down on one of our meetings, we wanna, we want everybody here to know what's going on, and have the ability to come into our, you know, means like our, our meeting last week at Farmers, the, the engineering group that came in, we had a great turnout for that, we, every, you know, we had a good, a good sized room here, you know, five, five fifteen, I mean, that's the stuff that we want, we want the local, the locals to realize, hey, here's what we're doing, we're trying to make progress, we want everybody to be involved, try to get the work out as much as possible.
Well, if the Monitor's got that date, we can't do that, for sure.
Right.
Right, and, and that's the thing, I mean, again, we can't, you're not, I mean, if something's going to your business or, or my business, saying, I want you to change that, you do your work, okay, thanks for coming in, we'll think about it.
We don't deliver for it, sorry.
Very much.
I don't see a purpose in putting it in the Tribune, Sun Times, or newspapers, no Mooney people, substantial amount of Mooney people are not gonna read them.
Well, actually, we, we didn't get the circulation numbers from the Tribune or the Sun Times, I suspect there's a fair number of readers of the Tribune in the Mooney area, they, since they couldn't provide it to us, I have to discount that as well, because as much as they might have higher readership in the South, uh, South Town or the Daily Journal, if they can provide us that circulation information, I, I'm gonna discount that, much like I would the Daily Herald, I just want to clarify, from a legal compliance issue, we used the Herald because we had to, you know, for the timing, based on the information we gathered at that time, we could have just as easily, in some cases, used the South Town because of looking at it now, studying this out, realizing what it says, that if the county is inadequate, you know, for publication type thing, then we can go outside the counties while circulation is high, you know, the reason why we use the Herald, there's other people use the Farmers Weekly, the Labor Union Report, whatever, there's three or four publications out of Juliet, legally meet the criteria of the statute, the goal is not to merely meet the legal criteria of the statute, but to provide for, with the same efficiency and cost and things like that, be able to provide for adequate circulation, and there are certain criteria, it's amazing with Larry when you have to study this stuff, but there's even definitions of what a newspaper even is, and there are Supreme Court rulings and everything else, and there's actually a website now that was implemented two years ago, three years ago, or something like that, about the same time this was passed, that you can actually go to, is it publicnoticeillinois.com or something, where is that, sound right?
Sounds right.
Whatever. Anyhow, but you can actually look up a legal notice for anywhere in the state, so no matter who you publish it with, everybody has access to that, because any of the newspapers that are qualified by the state to be of legal public, legal notices are mandated to also post that same thing through the state website, so, again, going back to this here, I, I'm looking for direction to help the staff so that they're not being challenged unnecessarily for one paper or another as to why we're doing what we're doing, I'm looking for guidance from the, from the, from the board, because I don't want to put that burden on the staff to make that decision if it's, you know, perhaps a block or hotbed or whatever else or anything else, that it just, you, you gotta copy the statute where, where it lends prior statutes, and we're merely looking for, your recommendation from the board.
I will move we use... I just have a couple more questions, Mr. Holston, to your point, you said, if you get the Country Market, but you don't read it, but you get the Monitor and you read the Monitor, public opinion time, who else does not read the Country Market, but they do read, read their Monitor every week?
I read the Country Market, but I don't read the Meet.
I read the Country Market.
You read the Country Market, who reads only the Monitor? Okay.
That's enough.
Maybe I don't want to.
Who reads neither of us?
Well, I think, I think it's important that if they're gonna do that, that you make it known to...
Everybody.
That's where it is, you wanna look for them, that's what you look for.
Yeah, if I know what's gonna be in the Country Market, I'll start reading the Country Market.
Well, and then consistently, if we've picked, if we've chosen two, if we're gonna list two or something, you can direct the village, you know, all our public notices will be listed in the, in the Monitor and the Country Market.
But the problem is, is it's not actually illegal, typically because of timing, because we have a developer or somebody else get a fence put in, you know, special use, whatever, you know, you're on, you know, a couple of you are on the P and Z, you know, people come and they, they have this idea, they want to do this, and they get a, get a special use or a variance or whatever to, to do certain things.
Well, some folks have waited three months until there was an official meeting to come in front of the...
I understand. I understand. So I guess the question is, is when we're looking for development to take place, be it residential improvements, which may need a special use, or public notices, whatever else. If we're gonna list it in the Monitor on top of the country market, if you're gonna say, if you're gonna leave with the country market, that's fine. If you're gonna list it in the Monitor, technically it's no longer a legal notice. Because it's not meeting any of the criteria of the 15-day correct situation in that regard. So I'm not real sure if it's necessary. Redemption might be fine, but you're gonna realize that you're gonna spend twice what you're spending right now in order to accommodate that. And it won't be on the 15-day deadline. Typically, it will be maybe six days, four days, or whatever before the actual hearing would be taking place.
Well, we have to meet a 15-day requirement, and the Monitor has to have this kind of lead time. We can't use them to meet our requirements. I understand. Don't like it, but that's their business. They, they, as long as we've given them the opportunity and they haven't changed, then the Daily Herald obviously is, is the one that we can use in a pinch.
Right.
And the country market is the one that does reach everybody in the Moni, you're correct. If we publicize on our webpage that all announcements will be put, placed in these two news, our, in the news organizations, then people will, those are my recommendations.
So I think trustee Horn was about to make her, unless someone else had more discussion, trustee Horn, do you have a recommendation?
I would move that we use the country market to publish our legal notice.
Do we, do we wanna make that motion?
I'm looking for a recommendation. I'm looking for consensus. That's all I'm looking for. I just wanna direct the staff according to the board's recommendation. Consensus, is that all I'm asking for?
I, I, I think it needs, it's a policy, it don't need a motion per se, just sort of understanding that among the board, that this is a newspaper that the village would use. Secondarily, remember when you do a zoning board meeting, a special use or variance, it's assigned posted by the site anyway, so that's the second type of notice. Third thing is, the other notices are usually twice a year. It might be the budget and the appropriation of it. So recently, we haven't published that much, but when it does come up, you know, we're gonna pinch, you can use the, I'm sorry, the country market. So I would just make a policy, there's an understanding that this would be a newspaper as well possible, we'd use the country market.
So can I dispute a consensus? Not, not a, not a motion per se, I guess, but a general consensus, is that okay, Larry?
Yes, sir.
So trustee Horn is making a recommendation for the country market. Can I get a show audience, anybody in favor of that? Trustee Holston, here, okay.
No comments.
All right.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I will make a comment, I'm on the record.
Okay.
My comment is, let's do a better job of planning.
I hear you. Here you go. Good. Mr. Bautista, would you mind coming aboard and, and discussing item H for the electric aggregation program?
Yes, over the past few months, been in communication with Will County government in regards to the ComEd opt-in aggregation program. And recently, it was down to one vendor left, and they made their proposal last week, and the proposal was actually higher than ComEd's pricing. So at that point, the expiration will be December 31st for the current aggregation program. And Will County will continue to monitor, but in the meantime, they've also have given information for the public. They may wanna look for their own programs as well. There's a website. It's www.pluginillinois.org. And I'll give that one more time. www.pluginillinois.org. And on this site you can visit, and there's other vendors that are available. There's also another one that you go to the ComEd sites. The ComEd site offers a real, a residential real-time pricing program. It's RRTP. And if you go to their site, it's info, I-N-F-O, at comedrtp.org. So it's info@comedrtp.org.
Is that, is that, that's what it looks?
There's the, the website. That's ComEd's website where you can look at this RRTP program. And this is another opt-in program, if you choose to join. They have off-peak hours if you.
That side or it's?
I think it's just RRTP.
They'll post this on the website, right?
It'll be on the website as well as the press release, the whole panel.
And if you could just explain more of the difficulties, and I'll, I'll, I'll give a summary and hopefully you can add more flesh to it. Because Moni did not enter, a handful of communities that did not elect on the referendum to go with the out-to-out program. The, the consolidation of all the communities that were in the opt-in program worked together through the county. Problem we ran into was the fact that there's so little participation. I think Wilmington actually had the highest percentage. Moni had one of the lower percentages, Moni had like a less than eight percent participation in the program. Related to communication, could be related to just a general lack of interest by the public to be involved in it. If we were part of an out-to-out program, we'd probably still be in a more competitive pricing than the ComEd pricing. But because the problem that it ran into, if I understood correctly, had to do with these plans were required as much as possible for them to be cost efficient for the businesses, the brokers, if you will. They need people to do automated pay, sign-ons and stuff like that for it to be cost effective for them. And very few of the people even signed on or even do the auto-pay options. And that actually simplified for their man-hours and everything else to make it cost-effective. So is there more to it than that?
No, just, exactly, you put it pretty much in a nutshell. Just because of the lack of response, it would cost more money for the vendor to put the mailing out, postage, envelopes. Send out to a very small group of folks that chose, you know, chose to be in this.
Who is the, the single vendor left?
It was Constellation. Constellation Energy was the last vendor, and their price actually was higher than ComEd's.
Because I am doing the aggregation program, and we've gotten letters now and been contacted by ComEd that, you know, December 31, we have to switch. We're automatically gonna go back to the ComEd unless we pick another provider. But we won't be in an aggregation program. We have to go on our own and find a new one.
Correct, correct. And you might find something more competitive just than, than Constellation, only because if you're doing it by yourself, your chances are you're gonna do all the automated features and stuff like that. That are gonna simplify, make it cost-effective in that situation. But when you try to move everybody over, and it's not the whole.
That was the whole point of doing an aggregation anyway, so, you know, supply and demand kind of thing.
Sure.
There was nine municipalities that participated in this last opt-in, that voted yes, and of the nine, only one, and a mayor mentioned Wilmington, had the highest response. And that was a little bit over 20% response from the residents. And the remainder were all, all at about eight percent. And I believe Moni was one of the lowest responses, and it was, it was under eight percent. So that's contributed to that, that decision. So when the real-time pricing then goes into effect, getting it first, I believe it's gonna be somewhere at 7.4 cents a kilowatt hour. Now, this program that they offered that I mentioned earlier, the RRTP, and I'm not being a spokesperson for ComEd, but. This, this, just so the village knows, they take advantage of this, they look online at, at the website. I believe it's, it's somewhere around 4.7 cents a kilowatt hour in off-peak hours. So with basically this program, you're gonna use the bulk of your energy after 4:00 p.m. till 7:00 a.m. So if you throw your, do your dishes at 4:00 o'clock, you wash or dry and you know that, you'll see a significant. And I have seen somewhere near about 17, 18% savings in the past year myself. I'm in this program, so. Just throwing that out there. I know there's a lot of people that are upset. We've had a lot of people call the village, have stopped by the village, and are upset about this, and I understand, so.
Well, and I, we haven't seen any, like, cost savings on the aggregation because there's the delivery charge or the fee now. Because ComEd isn't delivering it, ComEd charges a fee. So whatever savings you have in getting the energy, ComEd is charging them, much like, you know, Comcast, the, is, owns all the cables. So if you don't have Comcast as your provider, AT&amp;T uses the same cables. So you get AT&amp;T and Comcast charges AT&amp;T. So it's the same, the same thing. You're not saving much.
They actually have, have, I'm not sure percentage-wise, but there's, there's two aspects of what ComEd does. One is delivery of service, and, and which is maintenance of the lines, infrastructure, like we have the water system and everything else. And then there is kind of, again, like our sanitary part of our water system, Aqua handles that for us, so we're just not gonna charge on. In this situation here, you're, you're jiving out the, not the delivery portion, because that's always gonna be on ComEd. But what you're doing is you're, 'cause that, we never saw that separated before probably in your bill.
Yeah.
But it's always been part of the equation. So what we've been getting a discount on, and it has been some, I'm not sure how much different people have identified, they say $10 a month or whatever. But what you get your savings on ends up being on the, the product, the consumable, not the delivery, but the, but the consumable of it. So the amount of energy actually being used is actually what you're getting a discount on. So again, it's frustrating for the public, and if the public had voted to approve the out-to-out program, where people that didn't wanna be a part of it could simply say, I don't wanna be a part of that. They can stay with ComEd or with whoever the, well, personally preferred provider was. We wouldn't be in this situation because that program has a lot more saturation, a lot more cost savings, I believe, because of the higher numbers you have to work with, so. Okay, next item. As you know, there was a, I was at H5, we're in the enterprise zone. There was a meeting a couple of weeks ago at Madison, at the community center pertaining to the enterprise zone. Will County, State's Attorney, who represents the county board's perspective, Cook County has some concern. But since the meeting had taken place within the enterprise zone, but it was in the Cook County's portion of that, Will County attorneys believe it was in the best interest for consist, for conformity with the statute, to actually have a separate hearing in, in somewhere within the Will County portion of that district. So they are gonna have a meeting next Tuesday at 4:00 p.m. That's Tuesday, the 18th, at 4:00 p.m. And they're gonna have it at Chute's. I know it seems kind of interesting that you have it in a business like that. Practically speaking, the legal requirement is, actually has to be in the zone, not just in the community where the zone is at. So we had to pick a business or a building that's actually part of the proposed enterprise zone. So Chute's opened the door and offered us to use the west part of the room for that 4:00 o'clock hour, so they could do a presentation and deal more interest and information to our local businesses and residents. So that'll be next Tuesday, the 18th, at 4:00 p.m. at Chute's, and I believe the county will be running that meeting. So this is just as a matter of information passing on, do you know? Okay, item number six. Some of you are aware that Maverick Football won their Super Bowl for the lightweight team. Subsequently, they were able to assemble a, an 11-U team, and I just found out what that means. Sorry, that means 11 and under. And so they compiled a team of 20 children from the junior varsity and the lightweight division. And they went and were participating in a tournament championship, we're gonna call it, in Michigan, and they won the championship. So not only did they win locally, here with the Ivy League, you know, 10 towns that are part of the Ivy League, eight, okay. So they made it up there, and now as a result of winning that championship, they are allowed to participate in the, I don't know if you call it the World Series, Super Bowl, whatever else. It's a whole different thing because of the tournament style. They have three or four games a day that they have to endure. To me, that's football, three or four games a day, that's pretty brutal. But the, the championship for the, for the country is actually being held in Dallas. And I'm looking at Heidi, 'cause I know she's as well aware of this as well. It's gonna cost them roughly $20,000 for the 20 kids to get down there, about $1,000 apiece. And that's gonna be their travel, their lodging, their meals, all that kind of stuff, I think is all part of that. I talked to Brad, one of the coaches that is involved coordinating the, the team and everything else. And I said, well, what, you, 'cause he, they, they queried us and said, hey, you know, can the village help? And I'm going like, well, we're, we're trying to find provisions for how we can help. You know, without affecting the property taxes and different things like that. That's the reason why a couple of these things that you see listed in here. We're trying to find some initiatives to better support our, our youth programs and park, you know, operations and things like that without being a burden on our, on our property taxes. I told him, I said, there's no way the board's gonna approve spending $20,000, you know, by any stretch of the imagination. He said, no, I'm not asking for that. He said, well, how about their participation costs? And I think it comes out to about $60 a kid for their participation costs. Not the meals, not the transportation, not the lodging, it'd be about $60 a kid, so that'd be about $1,200 is what they're, they're asking if the village would be willing to help them with. And that would be kind of like a scholarship for these kids to, to let them go down there and play. There's an additional. There's, there's an additional fee that they can pay if they, if they choose to. Apparently, there's some talent scouts that'll also be down there. And there's an opportunity that they can get the, the tapes and different things like that of the, of the play. I'm not encouraging that we go there. If they wanna go that route, they wanna pay the actor for all that and stuff, it's entirely up to them. But I'm looking for a support of the board if, or, or not pertaining to, an amount not to exceed $1,200 to support the 20 students, students, youth, whatever. That would be going to this playoff championship. And I'll open for discussion, comments, whatever.
If we approve this, from what part of our budget could it conceivably come?
Again, I don't want this to be in effect on our properties actually, because that's a whole different realm that I'm comfortable with. You know, we, we've had several requests for things in the past, and typically somebody comes and asks for, you know, $100 for this or $200 for that, on occasion, we'd, we'd approve that. This is quite a bit more significant.
So, and I would be clear because, and yes, you know, my boys are done, they were varsity all done, so none of my kids are involved. But I do know too, those boys that were playing, that are playing, are incredibly talented, devoted coaches. And I'll, I'll just dataally open, this is the first time Moni Mavericks have pretty much gotten on the map and gone this far. It's an incredible honor for these kids to be playing at this level. This is an invitational, a national invitational. So that being said, that's my, my plus for these boys, because I have watched, watched them play.
So is it, and, and I know, we talked about this before, this is perhaps on par with the team from Chicago, went to the World Series for Little League?
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit.
Is that, is that, Billy, you're shaking it. I don't know. I, I don't fully understand.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting, bud.
Okay, I, I'm looking for feedback, 'cause I'm not sure how it works.
No, look, I am not knocking these kids one bit, 'cause I know half of them. My daughter plays on a travel softball team, that we are going to Orlando in July, and we are paying $15,000 is what we estimate our trip for. And we are fundraising our butts off. I would never come to a village board and ask for $1,200 when we sit here night after night after night and fight over 300, 400, 500. They do have something on their website or on Facebook to donate to them. They do have something on their website or on Facebook to donate to them. And I plan as my family and donating to these kids. As a village, we go to, to our local businesses and ask for sponsors for our Fall Fest, for our, our Halloween happenings, our pancake breakfast. And Mayor, you touched on it. I have a problem giving them one, two, three hundred dollars when we give everybody else. But twelve hundred dollars, my, that's, that's over the top. And again, I, I do appreciate what these kids have done. I know these, I know these kids, I know those coaches worked their butts off. But that price is ridiculous, coming to ask. And I would hope that fellow trustees can say that too. And I, I, I know where you're coming from, you come from哪儿, okay? But I'm in the same situation. I don't know, our teams are working their butts off to get where we need to be. Those kids have worked their butts off. I have no problem giving them some money, but not that kind of money.
And all I would say to, to Bill too then, um, as the foundation, what we had always done, um, is to secure, if they're asking for funding, show me three other ways that you're doing your own fundraising. So they're not asking us for twenty thousand or they're not coming to us for most of the proportion. What are the kids doing? What are the parents doing? What is the league doing, um, or the, um, organization doing to support those boys as well? And proof of it.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking for some, some ideas here because I'm not sure how to address this because it is more robust than anything we've ever even considered before. And, um, again, I know that one of the topics came up earlier had to do with the gaming license or the machine fees and stuff like that.
I don't think that's relevant at this point.
No, I know, but you, when I was, I, so, so somebody asked, you know, where we propose to, uh, draw some of the, the, the funds for this, if it's not coming from the general fund property taxes, then, you know, it's gotta come from somewhere because ultimately it's affecting our bottom line.
Right.
And, um, so, uh, I'm, I, I was just kind of taken back and I haven't confirmed this yet, you know, Daryl and I were talking the other day that, uh, not too long ago, uh, the village used to make a contribution to the scouts for about a thousand dollars a year and they stopped doing that. How, Daryl, did you ever, you had a chance to look into that?
I, I didn't go back as far, um, I believe maybe four or five years ago that, that had been done.
About five years ago they had?
Yeah.
And it stopped there. And, and there again, I, I'm not saying we need to be doing all this stuff, but at the same time, where do you get, where do you get what I do? I'm, I'm looking for feedback from you.
I don't see a problem with a, a monetary donation. I'm not giving it a well at this point. But I think if they can raise eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, twelve hundreds to drop in the bucket. I mean, uh, in other words, they're asking us for twelve hundred, they need twenty thousand.
It's basically what, sixty dollars a kid is what they're asking for.
I understand.
I, I'm just trying to break it down so we don't think it's...
Well, I know that, like Bill was saying, we, we donate, people come to us and ask for donations and we usually freely give. I think we need, uh, and this, I, this is a good cause, this is a great thing for these kids, um, but I think there needs to be some, uh, consistency, I guess, across the board on what we're doing. So I know we've got requests for a hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars, so I think it's very appropriate to be consistent, uh, with that and, and let's say donation three hundred.
Tracy Holson? I'm, I'm looking for feedback here.
Um, I'm probably the biggest sucker there is when people come to me for donations, personally, but this is the village. And, um, like trustee Gray, my son played soccer literally out of the country and I personally paid out of my own pocket and had to raise money and never once considered going to a, to a city or a village. I don't know how much the city of Chicago paid for that team this year. I don't think they paid a penny to that.
I don't know.
But I, I don't think a public organization should be, I, I certainly want to support the kids, I certainly want to see them going, I'm certainly proud of what they've done. But I don't think that's the village's, um, responsibility and, and I, I think we'd be very careful as a village to get into that because now what, what are you gonna do when the scouts come to you? What are you gonna do when the baseball team comes to you? What are you gonna do when, you know, the next great, and they're all good organizations, but somewhere you have to draw a line. And, um, we, we ought to be creative in finding ways to, to give them support. Certainly I'll support that, but they can have a fundraiser, they can, you know, there's other ways to help them, I think, than just giving them the money. But I also realize they wanna go right away, but, um...
It's actually, I believe it's actually the week after, is it the week after Christmas? The week after Christmas or whatever?
They're timed off and they are, like, you have to...
I understand that. But I think it's, it's a dangerous practice for the village. I don't know, where does that, do it, did, you're...
What I've seen before in the past, trustee Holson, is, is used for charitable organizations or situations where someone needs some, uh, like their medical attention. And some villages will give a, a nominal amount to show support, but like you indicated, you know, it's tough to draw the line. And in some villages, I know what they've done so they won't run into this problem, is identify which groups will be...
Right.
Then it takes the board off the hook in the future. Are you on that list or not on that list? It's using charitable, uh, firemen, you know, for, for boot.
Most organizations have a budget and they identify ahead of time. And, and again, we should have a budget. If we have a budget, I mean, I looked real quick, I saw where we've spent seventeen hundred dollars this year on charitable donations. Not sure where they went, but that's what the budget says. How much more are we gonna, do we want to spend? What's our budget for the year? And again, I think that should come from staff and then if you have recommendations, fine, but, um, we've spent seventeen hundred dollars, it's not that we're not spending money, but it ought to be something we've established and identified. And, I mean, you know, every organization, including my church, has a budget for donations, but we also, as, as attorney said, we've identified that ahead of time. And somewhere you have to, you know, not that I don't want to support the football team, I certainly want to, but next week there'll be somebody else coming.
Trustee Rose?
I threw the, uh, the limit to three, four hundred dollars to keep it consistent.
Trustee Gonzalez?
I can't.
I need your input too.
I gave you my...
I know, but what dollar amount do you think is appropriate?
Um, and you and I talked a little bit too and I, you know, identified if we could figure out how many boys are, you know, live in the village and donate an, an amount, you know, you said sixty dollars per participant, or that's their participation fee. That's usually what the parents pay for, but, um, a dollar amount times twenty, you know, forty dollars per kid.
I would go with what you just said. I would go with fifty dollars per, for every kid that lives in the village. Fine. I, I'd go with that.
There's my recommendation.
But, but when the baseball folks come to me, then I'm gonna say the same thing.
Yep.
Fair enough? At some point in time, we have to draw a line.
But I think, but I know, we're gonna, you're gonna have to make a little bit on your stakeups. The difference between football and baseball is majority of the kids that, that play baseball from Moonee live here in Moonee. I'd say eighty to eighty to eighty-five percent.
Right.
The kids that play football from Moonee live in University Park. So I, it, it's more of a spanned out.
I understand.
I, I say, I agree with...
University Park should give that fifty.
Uh, yeah, that's a whole other story. Um, we can't get in the bigger streetlights. I agree with what myself and trustee, uh, Holstead said about, you know, litigate it to three hundred dollars. Now, again, I support these kids. No, it's all right because, nevermind. Um, I will support these kids on their fundraiser online. I've already talked to my wife about what we're gonna give them because I know the situation they're in, but we can't, like you said, we can't go, hey, hey, here you go, Cub Scouts, here's eight hundred. Here's eight hundred for baseball, here's eight hundred for, you know, for free. Where, where do we, where do we draw that line?
Actually, if, if Cub Scouts came to us and asked us for money, for, for money, I think we'd make a donation of three hundred.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm not, I'm just saying, we need to draw the line where, you know, I wanna see these kids do well, but, you know, I don't wanna pay, you know, their weight, their... They know what, you know, they know what they're up against and...
So can we go to Brian, three hundred?
I heard, I heard two numbers, all right. I heard trustee Gonzalez and the trustee Holston also indicated fifty dollars per kid that lived in the town. Trustee Horn indicated three hundred, I think somebody else backed him on that, so...
I don't know if we can figure that out tonight, who lives in the town.
Well, we gotta...
I'm just gonna be able to do that for it.
I'd just say, let's go to three hundred.
I just, next to that, uh, agreement, trustee.
All right, so trustee Horn for three hundred. Gray, a second there.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Yes, uh, we mentioned, uh, fifty dollars later.
Well, that was ours. Again, I'm trying to make sure I...
This, this covers the six.
Hey, trustee Pop?
Yes.
Hey.
You asked for comments.
I, I did. At this point, I've got a motion and a second. I'm...
Discussion.
Discussion's fine. Uh, Larry, help me out, I have this rules here because as much as I try to, if trustee Pop wants to make a recommendation to...
No.
No, no, I, I know, I, I'm just trying to make sure I do it right. Cause if there's, if there's a provision to make it, uh, fifty dollars per playoff, I'm, I'm okay with hearing that, but I, we, there's a correct one element.
There's a motion for it.
So either that, either this...
Take the roll call motion, it must be...
Unless, unless somebody else at table?
Yes. No, he just, he said he's discussing it.
Thank you.
No, no, that's, that's fine. I just wanna make sure if he's...
He's drafting it.
He's just discussing.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking for counsel, that's all. I'm gonna make sure we do this right. Okay, so...
So under discussion?
Yes, sir.
Um, I would normally agree with the three hundred except these kids have done something special and, uh, they are, you know, having a chance to go represent our community at a higher level. Um, I don't know how many kids, I mean, um, there are, but, but I personally think that, again, if they live in Moonee, fifty dollars a kid is more than... And there may not be six kids that live in Moonee, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, most of them do.
But, I, you know, definitely, you know, we, we need to find ways to help them, but in terms of what the village should do based upon previous policy, normally would be three hundred, but this is a little exceptional in that regard, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with fifty per kid personally as well. But I will vote no for that reason.
Okay, so we have two, we have a couple options here. If you guys vote no to this, then we can allow a new vote to be, a new motion to be heard, is that correct, Larry, is that... So I'll take a roll call. On the three hundred dollars, I just wanna make sure we're doing this right. I'll take a roll call on the three hundred dollars.
Trustee Pop?
No.
Reeseck?
No.
Gonzalez?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
No.
And Horn?
You guys all abandoned me.
Okay. Motion failed. I'll entertain another motion if somebody wants to make one.
I make a motion for fifty dollars per each child that lives in Moonee one time.
Second.
Okay. Holston, Gonzalez.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
I'm referring this to our lawyer. We have no amount on this, so we do want to wait, have a month, but we don't know.
Tonight.
Well, there's this legal, well, it's not to exceed...
Okay, it's legal, that's all I need.
Yeah, there's only twenty kids, so it's not gonna exceed that...
It's not going to exceed a thousand, but...
Correct. Yeah.
I wanna say, I appreciate it.
For a board record, soon.
I can't, I can't put mine out.
As long as they stop and say your stop sign, it's all good. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and I wanna make sure I do this right. Fifty dollars per student that lives in Moonee proper.
The Moni and Dale get adopted.
Discussion. So I guess I should... So where, where is this money coming from? What account does this come out of?
Well, you're the finance guy.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, our agreement.
Um, we budgeted, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but in part, uh, program expenses. Program expenses, um, would probably be the most, um...
Is that under Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec.
Okay.
I mean, it's under pro, uh, program expenses. It's what we pay our instructors, what we pay for, um, some of our...
Budgeted seventy-seven, twenty has been spent year to date. Okay. All right. That is my question, thank you.
Most places probably hasn't been able to slide out until... I know you, you're very good at that. All right. Roll call please.
Trustee Reeseck?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a dentist in the room? Cause I feel like we're filling teeth. I don't wanna know. I think I wanna know. Where are they, we, uh, officials report, hold courts.
Well, I had a long one, but we'll make this short tonight.
Thank you.
We talked last night about the tree planting. Uh, we got ninety trees planted within the last three weeks because of the nice weather. Um, that is all done for the season and the crack and seal and playgrounds is done and Walker's Grove is, I believe, done also. So I believe the crack and seal is being done for the season because now we're going to winter season. Our Public Works Department is up and ready to go, waiting for a snowstorm. All the trucks are ready to plow, we have to, salt, everything is up and ready to go. So hopefully we won't be in it for a month of snow, but they're ready. That's important.
Question?
Trustee Gray, man, just say something on your report. That's all right, man?
Absolutely.
They removed a couple of things that were damaging some of the equipment, uh, things that were sticking out of the ground. One was by Marilyn's Restaurant, and I don't know where the other one was, but it was, it was wrecking some of our equipment because it was sticking out. So we spent a little bit of money to hopefully save them. I know it probably weren't worth it, but I happened to see the truck out there working at it. And then I saw it on the bill, in the bills, so...
All right. Trustee Gonzalez?
Um, for Parks and Rec, again, I'll be quick. Um, just to recap really quickly on Halloween Happenings, um, even though we had a wonderful snowball fight and a sleigh ride instead of a hayride, there was more kids then and we gave away, I counted, we went over a hundred and seventy cups of hot chocolate that night. It was, it was a blast. The kids came in, they were frozen to the core, but what a blast. Um, we, that was the first time we did trunk or treat, uh, which I think too, everybody had a blast with. I know we'll be doing that again. Um, the kids all had a great time. I think the businesses even came, had a great time. And again, thanks to all the volunteers. Um, I know that almost all of us as trustees were out there as well as almost the entire staff of village hall. So again, um, this was all a fun night and, uh, people working for free for all of us. So thanks for that. December sixth is the village Christmas tree lighting from six thirty to eight thirty. And then, um, as last year, we'll have our official Christmas tree lighting. Santa, I guess, will be here, literally with bells on. We'll retire across the street to the, um, Moni Education Center for the caroling and treats and things and Santa Claus visits. And then last but not least is the Holiday Express. If you remember, we did like the Polar Express on the train and shared with the neighboring village. Uh, we're gonna be doing that again this year and we have a theme, helping Santa find his magical present, so we'll see what that is. And that's Saturday, December thirteenth. Um, there's two train rides from ten thirty, uh, there's one at ten thirty, one at one thirty from the Rich, uh, the Richmond Park Metro Train Station. And I do have, if anybody's interested, there are like registration forms available. They're, uh, fifteen dollars per ticket. And if you've never done it, it is pretty darn fun. It's, you know, it's like a captive audience for Santa and his elves. And different court.[1748.63]
And they're first come, first served on the tickets.
First come, first served, and I have no idea how many tickets, so.
One forty.
Forty for Moni.
One forty for Moni?
Uh, one forty.
One forty.
Sixty-five and sixty-five. Sixty-five of first train, sixty-five.
So we get half for the first train and half for the second train?
Yes, and the volunteers, volunteering the next row. That takes a while.
Okay. Right. Trustee Horn?
So we, I have a report. I'm not sure what you guys have on the first six-month budget comparison made through October twenty-fourteen. I think we do have a comparison sheet, at least a one-page summary. So when you run a taint on, on these numbers in these different departments, we are actually about four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars ahead of what is budgeted. So in spite of haggling over, you know, some of these donations, we, we spend our money very prudently and wisely, I think, and, and make sure we watch our funds going out. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on, on anything here. But if you do, can you direct them to myself or to Darryl? You can, you can probably go into much greater detail than I can, not probably, but he can in more detail. Then that would work. End of report.
Any questions regarding the budget or year-to-date comparison? And just to go on it, six months into it, if we're below budget, I'm impressed, especially considering we got a balanced budget for the first time. That's equally impressive. So thank you all the staff and all the department heads for being fiscally responsible in their decisions within their departments.
We have a wintry like we had last year. I'm sure some of that surplus will be used up with overtime for plowing and-
But we have all something.
Good.
I got a knock out the way because we have been told. Anyway, alright, next, business development, trustee Holston.
My turn.
Building Department, co-enforcement, trustee Pop?
Just two quick items. I mean, if every company that refurbished their building or put an addition at it, could do things like what Moni Heating is doing, you talk about economic development, it's a pleasure to drive by it. It just keeps looking better. The grass is in, they were watering it the other day, the sod, I should say. And signs aren't come yet. Just one other thing, Best Western here in Moni has had a name change. It's becoming America's Best Value Inn with the same ownership. And apparently Superintendent Crusell has a little bit of humor. He gives me some things that I can mention from my report. And on the bottom of the foot, this is bad. You can keep that on record too, over there with the camera. The Packers beat the Bears to a pulp last Sunday. Don't pack gold. I don't get it. Do not like it. Thank you, David. End of report.
He can't help it. It's John here, and I can answer. Thank you. Public safety, please.
No reformers, Mary.
Have we done yet? Attorney for-
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few items for the board to review.
Just a few.
The first one is the ordinance regarding the video gaming license fees. Capia for the same for the board's consideration. We've increased the fees to a level of one thousand dollars per year. It's up to the board to review and consideration.
I do want to clarify, I know it's been presented that, it was two of the local establishments have identified that, I'm not sure if it's based on their agreements with the vendor that they currently have, that they're using, council. But according to our ordinance, the, the ordinance stipulates that the burden for that payment is not to be on the proprietor at all. It is to be on the supplier of the machine. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Because our goal was not to burden or penalize any of the local proprietors, local businesses. We don't want to burden them at all any further. But there again, we can have a situation where we're trying to find a way to foster good programs, to counteract some of the, some people call it social bills, whatever you want to call it, that derive from gaming, gambling, whatever. That was one of considerations to better help fund some of our parks and youth programs in support of that type of thing. I do appreciate as the two proprietors that came forward, Lee and Brian both, their, their consistent support of programs within the community, different initiatives. I have a great deal of respect for both Lee and Brian and their business methods as far as the way that they have supported various programs. I know Brian specifically has, either directly through his business or the Legion, has helped at times with the Scouts when they didn't have a charter organization. The American Legion has actually helped out on occasion, but even that, they have limited funding for that. We have programs that are growing within our community. Scouting is an example. They have three times more scouts this year than they've had before. And the charter for the scouting program costs thirty-five dollars a kid, I believe it is. And that's just as an example. Other things like we just addressed with the football program or other initiatives that are, our desire to help where sometimes, hate to say it like this, but if mom or dad, you know, they gamble away the paycheck or part of it that needs to go towards helping their kids participate in programs, and if there's an ability to help, you know, with programs that can minimize some of that without being a burden on the property tax. We don't want to burden our residents any further by unnecessarily increasing property taxes, but at the same time, looking for creative ways, as we've discussed, to deal with these things. So Larry, if you could give some interpretation on why, I don't know, is it because of an agreement that the, the proprietors have signed with a particular vending company that has been the case?
I believe so. I think our ordinance indicates that it's not the owner who's assessed the fee, but from what I understand, it's your agreement, Mr. Boswell, it's your agreement that you agree to pay-
With Excel? With Excel Entertainment, so he is-
It's your agreement with video-
With Excel Entertainment? Yeah, can you come on up with it? Just so can-
Here it is. Because you don't have the mic closed on.
I think so. Your, your agreement with the video gaming-
Excel Entertainment, yes.
In your contract, you, you agree to pay half the-
That's what they said, yes.
So that was something that you agreed to with Excel directly?
Well, no, they told us that.
But there's more than one vendor, because I think Marilyn's is an example, isn't it?
I don't know what they're doing. I'm just, they came to me first, and then the other two joined on with us.
So possibly you could contact the vendor and-
I asked him. He says, what, anything, the video gambling thing, you pay half, anything. Like, I'm getting my machines moved, so people coming in there, we're moving them over. I've got to pay that out of my own pocket, so it doesn't bother the people coming in and out. But it's always been since the beginning, because before the, the other board that was here, there was some discussing on, they, they wanted to go high like last time, and they knocked it down to two, thinking that we don't have to pay for anything. And I, I was trying to tell them, we have to pay half, whatever it is.
Well, I'm sorry.
And I didn't, okay.
No, and if that's, if that's consistent with their- But that's, that's what they agree to, and that's what all the vendors are doing, and that's what they know. That's something they agree to with them, not based on what our ordinance stipulates. Do you understand, so like, is there a way that we can double charge and then rebate? I don't know. I'm just trying to find out if that's where our goal is, to generate that kind of, I believe we're trying to figure out if there's a legal-
I would have brought your contract up here, but I know I was going to get into this.
Yeah, I'm just surprised that there would be an agreement with one, one vendor specifically that would, without, I mean, there's more than one vendor.
We all agreed, we all agreed, it's a contract they gave us. Us, Michael, Village Inn, and Brian.
There's probably no women on there either. They're probably saying, whatever expenses the village imposes, you would pay half.
I can get that.
So hypothetically, the ten thousand dollars, you'd be liable for five.
Five thousand, yes. And it depends, the more games you got, the higher it's going to be too.
And what is there, just to be separate, talking numbers and the cost to you, just so we have an idea. I, I heard some soft numbers presented, I think, by Ryan earlier, about what the amount has been generated. Darryl, I don't know if you've had a chance to review any of that, but, so-
I got it right here. We, he said forty-six thousand. So far this year, we've brought in thirty-three thousand. So there's a thirteen thousand dollar difference that maybe the state has and we haven't got.
Well, we're two, we're two, couple less behind typically.
Yeah, Jay, Excel, when we, I heard about this, Excel called down there, see, you guys don't get paid by Excel, you get paid by the state.
Correct.
And to the date, it was, and they checked it to the end of September, was forty-six thousand, one ninety-eight, thirty-nine, seven hundred. That's named Towne.
Was that from first of the year?
Huh? Since January first. And that includes five establishments.
This is from May, so, okay.
And out of that, twenty-two thousand, and that forty-six is the truck stop. And I made sure, because I wanted to break it down, the bars and the truck stops. They make a little bit more because you get the interstate. We don't have that luxury, you know what I mean? So you got, so if it's-
I understand. I, I don't just, we're just trying to find the correct way to deal with the situation here. The goal was never to burden-
I know.
The providers. And-
I thought we'd be, I would be in favor for something where there's surrounding, surrounding towns.
Well, here's, here's, one of the things, the, the state, by the, by the structure of the gaming laws, allows for rural communities to be able to charge in excess of twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars, whatever it is. The, the de facto that you can charge for anything, not being home rules, twenty-five or fifty dollars.
I know, I went to the gaming board down, I can't keep a week, yeah. But you guys got to make the decision, you know. We have to go by it. I've always gone behind you guys, I mean for you guys, but I just see, we're just getting, you know. I know you got to make programs for everything else, but what did you, where would you get money if you didn't have the gambling here, you know? That's what, you know.
Well, there, there again-
So can I?
What, what did we do before we first did the gaming, right?
Well, here's, here's one of the things, I'm just saying, I'll turn to trustee, uh, Horne. One of the things that you specifically asked the previous board for was to level the playing field with the other communities so that you could have gaming here. Something you may not be aware of is in the last three or four weeks, the village has been approached by two businesses that want to bring in gaming partners, if you will. And thereby, that would actually potentially hurt your business, because they would go there, they want a liquor license just so they can-
Right, I understand, I know.
Have five machines.
I'm aware of it, very, that's why I went to this meeting.
One, one of the things we're trying to identify is how do we protect our current establishments? And that's even the reason why Larry has done a lot of research and implemented the liquor licensing thing, is to update it to contemporary standards, but also set limits on the number of bars or taverns to four, which is what we currently have, but then to allow other things like Frankies, Cliff and Tommy's actually have. Currently, they have the same liquor license that you do, which is not really suitable for their, their needs. They're technically a restaurant that serves alcohol, not a bar that serves food. And so by structuring that differently, we can limit the number of bars to the ones we currently have. We can set limits on the gaming facilities. Larry, is there a way that we can delineate based on the type of liquor license, what the fee would be?
I don't believe so. Much the board said years ago that if you have a liquor license, you're eligible for gaming.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is we have liquor licensing, but can you delineate the fee for a machine and a bar different than you do, let's say, the, what's that, A four, whatever it was, I don't know, who's listening to.
I have to say, we ran this problem with a different village, a very large establishment that people just want to go to. And we found out we charge, we impose a policy and charge one hundred.
Can we go back to a private meeting rather than a public meeting? And have a discussion with us? I thought we had a discussion here.
Well, we're on microphone, so I thought everybody was listening, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess what I heard earlier, again, Brian was talking about forty-six thousand, that's year-to-date, our year starts in May, so according to our budget, we've taken in thirty-three thousand dollars this year. So far, in the first six months, our budget for the year is forty thousand. We will easily double probably our budget for the year in revenue just from the gaming machines. I heard what he had to say in terms of what the villages around us collect for a regular fee. We may want to have a separate policy for gaming partners. I don't know, but I don't see anything here tonight for that. I'd like to poll the board and see what they want, what they think, because I for one, think we ought to leave it alone right now.
Second and third, that, that I think tonight, we need to table this, until we make up.
I also heard what he said relative to, we ought to be talking with them first, and I agree with that. We ought to be partnering with our businesses that are already here. We don't want to hurt our businesses.
We're looking at the possibility of, like you said, trustee Holston, an additional sixty to seventy thousand or more dollars that we never had before. I say we, as long as it's costing our people that own the establishments, it's going to cost them money. I'm sorry, that's how I feel.
If there was a way, let me, it's on for just a discussion about this. If there was a legal method for establishing a different rate for the machines, again, trying to protect our local establishments, if we implement these, we'll see later on, there's liquor license modifications. If we could establish where the bars, if you will, the class A-one licenses, according to that, were to be charged the two hundred dollars, anyone else would be charged a thousand dollars. Is that, or where can we merely discount? Could we put a provision in here? That way, we're protecting our local establishments we currently have, but any other businesses that would come along that want to have those machines, again, trying to find a way to protect. So Larry, is there a way that we can discount the fee for a local, for an A-one? There were, let's say we limit it to a thousand dollars for the gaming machines, but we discount that for anybody who's got an A-one license. So you actually provide a discount for an A-one license.
I would have to look at that, Mayor. At the off top of my head, I think most villages get pretty consistent, but I can see there are different categories for different types of liquor licenses.
Okay. So, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would be, I would like to table this as well, but the other thing I would like to be put in this ordinance, or however we modify this ordinance, the license fees, what are they going to, rather than just the general fund? Because you had talked about improving, using public safety or-
That's a different one.
Yeah, using that kind of language in this.
Right.
But, yeah.
So currently, our license fees off of the machines is forty-six hundred dollars, correct, Darryl? If you were to change this based on the number of machines that I believe we have, it would be in excess of twenty thousand dollars. Just so you know, that's the difference. Because we have over twenty machines on town.
But leave it alone the way it is with the revenue they're bringing, they're bringing in eighty thousand a year. And my, my concern is, I, I think we're going to do fine with what we have here. I'm concerned about a parlor coming in to town. Because now we're going to have to have additional police, we're going to have to have additional other things.
Well, and to clarify what a parlor is, and we'll get into that in a minute, but I call a parlor for lack of a better way to describe it, but I think we get the gist of it. It'd be, for instance, like the space where Quiznos is. It's about twelve hundred square feet, or Quiz is or was, I should say. One of the narrow suites like that, basically, they want to be able to serve alcohol just so they can make some sandwiches or soup or something like that. But they want to appeal to those people that just want to stop in and gamble like that. It theoretically will compete directly with our bars. The reality is, if we don't define them separately with a liquor license code, then we have no provision to say yes or no to them, because they would all be the same as a bar or a restaurant that serves alcohol or whatever. So we have to establish, Larry, the, the structure where you detail, here's what a gaming parlor criteria is, here's what a banquet hall is. This is what a restaurant is that serves alcohol. This is what a, a bar or tavern is. And by doing that, then you can identify the quantity that you will allow not to- not to exceed without going back before the board for, uh, specific approval to extend that. And that's whereas what Larry has drafted, again, later on down here, uh, that would limit the number of bars to be four, which is what we currently have, without coming back before the board and asking for an exception to that. If you had, uh, another type of restaurant that only comes in town, uh, Applebee's or something like that, that only served alcohol while their, their kitchen was open, that's a different type of commodity, it's a different type of business. Applebee's is a bad example, but you get the idea. So, you guys want to table the, this part of it at least? Okay. If there's a provision for council to identify a method for having an increased fee, which, let me just clarify this. If there's, that would actually help, trustee Holston, it would actually help discourage what you're asking about. That's part of the, you have to do sometimes with numbers, not necessarily with, with wording. You know, because then comes, uh, I won't say cost prohibitive, but less incentive for them to put a parlor in based on the, the fee schedule for that. So if council could establish a ordinance similar to J-one, that would offer a discount to anybody that was an A-one, Larry, uh, liquor license, where they would also, the A-one liquor license holders would only pay two-hundred dollars, which is what they're currently paying, everybody else would be charged a thousand dollars, so you could put an exception discount clause in their board. If, if that was possible. And if that's the case, and just so we get a consensus when we're ready to move forward. Can I get a show of hands of the board being in favor of letting the bars be limited to the two-hundred dollars? Everyone else would be a thousand dollars a machine. So your truck stops, your gaming parlors, or anybody else that would want to try to have the machines, they would be charged more. I just want to clarify that question, right? A yes or no?
No.
No? Just leave it at two-hundred regardless?
Right.
Right, yes. So table this or throw it away, or what do you want to do?
I'd like us to vote on this.
Um, may I make a motion to table this?
I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, just the motion.
I would make the motion to table this ordinance until, for, for further discussion.
Okay, trustee Horn, second of that. Local.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
No.
Holston.
No. I know where you're coming from.
Or? Yes. Pop?
No.
Raisit?
No.
I make the motion now that we've, you know, that we, that we just completely stay where we are and don't make any changes.
I'll start a bad motion.
I mean, our business is over here, they're making, I mean, they're, they're making money and we're making money. This, I mean, gaming issue would be a different thing altogether, but I don't see where this is anything that, that's going to encourage business to come in.
Did you hear the second one?
So we're in discussion, trustee Gray. We're in discussion.
Local.
Please state the question. Who will be voting in now?
To do nothing.
There's a motion on the floor which is second, to leave it as it is.
So this is amending what ordinance?
Not a bit, it's, it's voting it down.
You're denying the motion. You're denying the.
I mean, it's, and this is where I would say, if you want to come back to really complete rewrite on something else, I'm open to that, but I just don't like this at all. I don't, this is what I do.
I'm waiting for, trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Ford?
No.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisit?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next, I remind the agenda. These, uh, ordinance regarding business licenses, it'll be Title III, Chapter One, Section Twenty.
And there's, I believe there's, are there two ordinances here?
Yes, sir.
Two, A and B. Title III, Chapter Two, Section One, so first one you have.
The first one, the first one I indicate is Title III, Chapter One, Section Twenty.
Yeah.
This ordinance basically revising part of the reason for revoking a business license. If that company fails to comply with any all-state regulations, rules, requirements, the mayor has the right to revoke the license. Also, if the license is revoked, they could suspend a redevelopment agreement or variance, it's up to the board to view and consideration.
Is this like a?
Explanation?
Definition?
Here, let, let me give you the background of this particular one, because it, last year, if you recall, we had a situation where somebody, um, violated some state laws pertaining to one of the businesses in town, happened to be a liquor store, a latitude we had with them because they weren't collecting, or they were collecting, they weren't passing it on, sales tax, et cetera. We also ran into situations occasionally where somebody's violated, say, EPA or other issues, but this allows latitude to, um, exercise what we, we exercised last year because of the liquor commission had some authority, but it was limited, and the ability to actually shut down a business or to, to, not to shut it down, but to suspend, uh, until they could come into compliance. Otherwise, you have no teeth to work with the fire department, the health department, whoever else that there might be violations with, uh, the state. Um, and this gives some latitude also because of the, um, Section Three portion of this, indicates, uh, that if they have a variance or special use and they're willfully violating other regulations, they could jeopardize their, uh, development agreements or special use or variances or things of that sort. It's a clause that's been implemented within some of the special use agreements recently, development agreements, I can't believe, Larry, but it hasn't necessarily been widespread, so that it becomes a, a, um, so it becomes consistent. It just allows a little latitude there to help if somebody's deliberately violating certain regulations.
It should be noted, too, that this rarely occurs where a license is suspended, as far as I know, or revoked. And before a license is suspended or revoked, that applicant is given an opportunity to be heard before the mayor or liquor commissioner. Uh, this isn't mandatory, this is discretionary. So if there's a blatant violation of the ordinance or fraud, the mayor has a right to revoke the license. But again, it happens once every five years, ten years?
That, that business in question, didn't we poll?
They've been, they've been, they hit, they worked, and it was on, I'm not going to say shaky ground, but I wish it was implemented, but we didn't have as much substance, if you will. It was mostly by agreement because they failed to, um, contest the process, if you will. The, the other thing it does here is, we get into development agreements with people, um, businesses, and if they violate the terms of good standing, then they could potentially jeopardize the benefits of the development agreements as well, but by this, because that just encourages them to be compliant with state, federal, regional, local ordinances, laws, whatever the case may be. It's nothing heavy-handed about it, it just gives them more basis to be compliant.
Mayor, you know, this is amended to the, a current one, what is the exact, or the wording that's different?
I, I just added number six. The, the current provisions, basically, if I recall correctly, it goes one through five for a revocation or suspension, and it's basically like an application based on fraud, which are very, it's a, uh, common used language for the, uh, a revocation basis. All I did here is add, if they fail to comply with any all-state regulations or local regulations, the mayor has the right to revoke.
Then we'd be done with council and.
Yeah, there's always a hearing, like the gentleman, trustee Horn indicated, he came in twice for the hearing. I think he admitted liability, uh, so under a situation, you just don't revoke or suspend someone's license without a proper hearing, and you ever get an opportunity to be heard.
So this is our way in here, that we have the right to revoke, but you're just adding that one, sixth definition?
Yes, number one through five, I don't have it for me, but like, they, they give an example, some of them.
We don't know the entire thing, I don't know.
No. If someone makes a business application, found out it's fraud, that's a fraudulent misrepresentation, you have the right to revoke.
I'm looking for exceptions.
Second.
I'll need an ordinance number for that.
That would be sixteen ninety-seven.
And that was Holston and Gonzalez.
So we're in discussion.
I'm sorry, yes, we.
Uh, I, I just wanted to be clear. Did I hear you say, uh, Lawrence, that, uh, items, is it one through six are already established in the village?
One through five, I just answered for six. You don't want to be.
No, no, that's five, that's, you gave me the answer. I thought, that's what I heard, I want to be sure.
Local.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisit?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Connection with the business licensing, uh, Section Three, Two, One. This would apply to a company, it's right there, it would apply to a person who is applying, time and tendency, for the business and contractor's license, uh, and asked to reduce the license fee by fifty dollars if they're applying at the same time.
So if somebody is a general contractor that has a business-based auto money and they're also applying for the general contractor's or subcontractor's license, it would reduce the licensing on the contractor portion by fifty dollars?
Why?
Simplification. They're running a local business and just for making it easier for them, because if they're providing all the paperwork on the front end with the annual renewals and everything else, it just makes it easier for them and, uh, they're actually more likely than not doing work within the village and they're helping support our local economy than so doing, because they're locally based. It's a microphone. I forgot to shut it off from here. Just remind me to turn it on, I saw somebody go off the spot.
I make the motion in favor of.
I'll start it.
Holston or Raisit? Local. Ordinance number? I'm sorry, ordinance number, correct?
Sixteen ninety-eight.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisit?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance establishing a public safety and economic development program. This is a ordinance.
J-three, correct? Uh, just.
I'm sorry, item one three.
Correct.
This is an ordinance that would impose a fee upon certain classifications of sales, which would include alcohol, it would include firearms, it would include cannabis, tobacco, entitled personal property. The fees set forth on Section Three for baggage alcohol, consumption of alcohol, firearms, cannabis, title of personal property and tobacco. The rest of the ordinance indicates how that fee would be collected, when it would be due. But also, there's a provision in this ordinance pertaining to the right to review the books or the records of that company, and that if the company who sells the type of products, there's a facility improvement section of the ordinance, uh, the company who is depositing into this fund and have the right to seek reimbursement from the village up to twenty-five percent on certain improvements, which would include landscaping, some interior improvements and signage. It's up for the board to view and consideration.
Mr. Ruffey, so if you could, I know we've talked about this a little bit.